We do pledge, right? Start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Make sure our phones are off, right?
Oh, yes.
Silence. Do rule call.
Mr. Durkin?
Here.
Here. Here. Here.
Here. FOIA request?
FOIA request, we had one FOIA request, and it was about the bids that were placed for the roofs, and they were sent to the, uh, requestee.
Requestee. All right. Visitor's statements.
We had one request for extended time.
Let me read this, Dave, and then we'll shoot here.
The Board of Education welcomes and encourages participants of citizens in the business of school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours prior to the meeting to the superintendent.
All right.
I'll be never started.
It's nice you don't have to wait two hours.
Well, no, I don't mind. I'm moving along. Dave, that's right. It's your job, and I appreciate that.
First of all, I hope you all had a wonderful holiday season and blessed one with your families. And again, thank you for giving me this opportunity tonight and the additional time. Over the last three months, I've addressed the Board about the educational fund balance, the large amount of unused money that is being, not being spent within reason on the education of the district's students. Tonight, I'd like to mostly just address the comments that were made in the landmark article last month. Number one, I and other community members who have reached out to me remain confused about the current amount of money in that fund balance. So in that October 8th landmark article, which was reporting on the September 10th board meeting, the landmark reported that the projected fund balance was $22.4 million, which was 19 and a half million plus 2.9 million in working cash. But after that December 10th board meeting, the landmark reported that the projected fund balance was now 15.8 million, which was 12.9 plus 2.9 in working cash. And so that's a difference of 6.6 million dollars. And so my first question is, is did the landmark make an error in October? I went back and I watched the video online from the September 10th board meeting, and I was confused by some of the documents that were presented that night. One showed the fund balance as 19.5 million dollars without the working cash. Another showed it as 15.8 with the working cash. If the landmark made an error in October, why didn't the Board contact the landmark to have them print a correction? 15.8 million versus 22.4 million is a 33.8 percent error. If this was an error, the Board also had three meetings since that October meeting which they could have addressed and corrected that error, but that didn't happen. Could you imagine if one of us made a 33.8 percent mistake in our own monthly finances? Or what if a teacher made a 33.8 percent error in a student's grade? I can't believe such an error could be made and then ignored for two months. So would the Board, at its earliest convenience, or maybe I need to speak with Ms. Mettana, could they please put together a statement or presentation that's clarifying this fund balance? Because I think it's a really important part of the district's finances, and as taxpayers, we need to know what the right amount is. Number two, in the article, Dr. Skinkis stated that it's difficult to find a part-time teacher to alleviate the unsafe overcrowding currently in some of the chemistry classes. This may be true, although there may be a substitute teacher in the district that has science credentials that could maybe teach one chemistry class and then sub the rest of the day. However, he did neglect to mention that the Science Department currently has a part-time science teacher who teaches three classes, which is .6. And last May, that teacher sent an email to the administration stating that they would be willing to teach another class if the need arose. That teacher received a thank you email, but was told there would not be a change in the Science FTE for 2019-20. But Dr. Skinkis knew that the enrollment numbers last spring and knew those classes were overloaded. And yet, the choice was made not to spend the $11,000 or so to remedy the problem and improve the educational experiences of the 168 students that were in honors chemistry, instead counting on a few students changing levels, which did not happen. And currently, all six sections of regular chemistry are either at their cap or one away from the cap. So even if the students chose levels, there wouldn't be room for them to make that change. So having that part-time teacher teach one more class would have been an easy solution that would have greatly benefited all of our chemistry students. Number three, I questioned the Board's practice of issuing bonuses to members of the administration. Dr. Skinkis in the article stated that half of his $23,000 bonus is a retention bonus. I looked up retention bonus, and I was shocked what I read. Businesses give retention bonuses to employees who they're afraid of losing to another competitor. So retention bonus is given to incentivize an employee to honor their contract they have signed and to not leave. But doesn't that contradict the spirit and purpose of signing a contract? I was taught that when you sign your name on a contract, you are obligated to fulfill that contract or receive penalties for failure to do so. But instead, the Board chose to give bonuses to the superintendent for doing the job he has already signed up to do. And I'd like to reiterate, we are not, I should say, District 208 is not a business or a corporation. We are a nonprofit organization. And that retention bonus alone would have corrected the unsafe overcrowding in all six of those honors chemistry classes. Number four, I would like to talk a little bit more about fiscal responsibility. Last year, the district CFO was paid $90,000 plus bonuses and benefits. The Board chose not to renew him after he completed his three-year contract. But instead of replacing him with another CFO, maybe one with more experience and at a slightly higher salary, under the direction of Dr. Skinkis, former principal Kristin Mettana was promoted to Assistant Superintendent of Finance. According to the RB website, her salary last year as principal was $134,000 plus bonuses in retirement and healthcare benefits. Her salary this year in her new role is $139,000 plus those same benefits and other bonuses. So the Board approved someone who was brand-new to the position and is paying them $49,000 more than their predecessor. Now, I know that Ms. Mettana is retaining some of her staff evaluative responsibilities from when she was principal, but does that warrant an additional $49,000 in salary compared to her predecessor? And our new principal, Dr. Freitas, who has less principal experience than Ms. Mettana, has a base salary of $135,000. He is being paid $1,000 more than she was paid last year, and yet he has none of her evaluative responsibilities. How is this being a fiscal steward of the district's money? President Smithing in the article stated that the Board continues to worry about 2023 and paying off debt and the pension issue. How does the Board justify the additional expenditures of both of these administrative salaries? The Board has a right to pay its administration a competitive salary with bonuses if it so chooses. With $52,000 in bonuses, a $49,000 raise to the new CFO, $1,000 higher starting salary for the new principal with a reduced job description, the Board has sent the message that they value the work that these people do on a daily basis, and I do too. But the Board has an elected duty to the education of the children of its constituents. If you are choosing to spend that much additional money, $102,000 more in salary and bonuses, and you have between 15.8 and 22.4 million dollars in your savings, surely the Board could have also chosen to spend the $22,000 or so needed to alleviate the unsafe overcrowding in all 12 chemistry classes, which would have had an incredibly positive impact on the 320 students in chemistry. But instead, that those students have been negatively impacted by the choice not to spend that $22,000. This is unfortunate, especially since we have those financial resources. Lastly, this is not about spending money to just spend money, as President Smithing stated. Anyone who truly knows me knows I'm a very frugal person. I'm generous, but I strive never to be wasteful. I would never talk about raises for teachers. I would never talk about additional coaches. I'm talking about spending money that we taxpayers have paid on our students. And when a district does this, everyone wins. The students get a better education. Test scores improve, which improves the rating of the district, which improves the property value of the taxpayers' homes. Teachers teach in better situations. We make more connections with students and families. We can provide more interventions. Again, every stakeholder wins. All of you are parents on the Board, and you all know there's a significant difference between needs and wants. Right now, there are significant needs in this building that are not being properly met in student services, in the dean's office, in the nurse's office, in other departments. And unfortunately, there's a history of our school Board not always being informed of the true needs of the building. It's time for this new Board of Education to do some solid fact gathering, to do some serious reflection, and do what is right educationally for all 1,660-plus students in its charge. The decisions you make truly have a tremendous impact on their education, one way or the other. Again, I thank you so much for listening and for the additional time. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, so we'll go to additional discussion items. At this point in the meeting, Board of Education members may request to add an additional discussion item.
Yes, I have one. So for the next meeting, discussing the February 22nd visioning session.
Right. We need to discuss.
Agenda. We need an agenda and invitees, right?
Right. We're going to invite, we're going to.
Is there time? Is there time to?
How we're going to get people to come?
Is there time at the end of today's meeting, Wes, to address additional discussion items? Is that on our agenda?
I'm sure it is. We can do it. Consider items for future meetings, discussion items requested.
I think we've added some previous discussion items. You can put it under 11, right?
Yeah, put it under 11, and we can just talk about them, right?
Yeah.
Because I think we really want to.
I do have a brief update I could provide that I could speak to. And then if there's more, we can report on more of the 22nd, or the cow meeting.
Right, because then we want to talk about how we're going to advertise and what that is.
Okay.
I have one more. I received an email, and I don't know if anyone else did, today, late in the day, from the Village of Riverside about the census. And I know Dr. Freitas talked about that in his update last time, and I just wanted to reiterate the importance of the census and everyone in all the villages that feed into RB taking being counted seriously, because even being off by 1% could cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars in state and federal aid over the next 10 years. So, thank you.
And Dr. Freitas will attend the Riverside. They're doing a workshop. I don't have the date in front of me, but I did receive the email from Kathy Haley this afternoon, and Dr. Freitas has been our representative in both the Brookfield, and he'll attend the Riverside one as well.
And I have one additional item, too. If I could ask for, not at this meeting, but either the next meeting, if Kristin or Kevin. We've heard a lot about fund balance. We've talked about fund balance. I think we've studied the fund balance. Can we get a 12-month look back of fund balance, month by month? I know at the end of the fiscal year, it's always very low. When property taxes come in, it goes up. That probably accounts for some of the fluctuation that we see in different reporting sources. But I think a 12-month look back might be a helpful place to have a discussion, which may ultimately be part of the February retreat discussion in terms of fiscal policies and how we address this and what's considered adequate.
I think it's a big part of the February conversation. I mean, that's why we're doing this stuff. Where's the community want to move forward, right?
Well, I think, you know, our policies don't specifically lay out what the fund balance should be as a percentage of the budget. I've looked through a number of other districts. Most don't. I know we've heard that IASB has an opinion. I have yet to have been able to unearth what their actual directive is in terms of a fund balance. There's some GFOA materials I think I shared with the Board. There is not a hard line in the sand. I think it's about the Board and the amount of appetite for risk the Board has in terms of knowing what happens at the state level or at a local level with regard to the budget.
I do believe that we do have a Board policy on fund balance. I'll have to find that for you. And there's a state code for recommendation. So we'll have to find those. It'd be good to bring those to that conversation.
I have not seen a specific number in either, but if you have it, that would be great. Thank you.
But I think we can do that next meeting if we were to talk about.
Kristen and I already started working on draft of that fund balance chart, so people have a better understanding. So we can have that in the financial report. It's not a problem.
Thank you.
Discussion items on this side?
Well, we have. Number 12, when we come back for consideration of further meetings. I can't do that.
All right, consent agenda, action items.
We need a motion to approve the approval of the minutes.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on December 10th, 2019, open and closed, as presented in the January 14th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
This is an all in favor, right?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Old business?
Life safety capital improvements is obviously, it's item number B, the roof replacement bids. So you have the recommendation from the architect, and I believe Kristin corrected the $1 amount, and so we need the Board to approve that tonight. We had 11, I think 11 bids, correct, Kristen?
Correct. Are you ready?
Yep.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves GE Ridda Ford Company, Inc., with a base bid price of $730,400 for the roof replacement, as presented in the January 14th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
I will need a vote on that.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Do we have this chart up for everyone to see?
Well, the chart was part of the FOIA, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, we had 11 bids, but while we're having a public meeting, it would have been nice to have the chart there, just so.
There was also, there was also the recommendation from DLA was in the packet as well.
Just so anybody watching the meeting could see that.
Yeah, Mary Ann showed it earlier. I think it's part of the FOIA.
I think I have it on page seven.
Yep.
Yeah, it's page seven.
Okay, so can we have the, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Seconded.
Gina read it, I seconded it.
Okay, Mary Ann, can we get a vote?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Jessica?
I'm waiting for the chart. I mean, this is a public meeting. I'd like those numbers presented, so if people can see it, thank you.
I'm fairly certain they were all presented last month, just for the sake of the public. I think it's a good point to bring it up again, but this is not the first time they've been available.
Right. I think I even discussed it, too, right?
Right. But while we're voting to spend this amount of money, it'd be helpful to have.
It's a lot of money. You're right.
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yep.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. All right. School calendar, right?
School calendar. We had several meetings with the, I met with the feeder schools, I met with the administration on several occasions. We looked at different calendars. This was presented to the Board as a first read in December, and we're asking for you to approve the calendar for 2020-2021 school year.
Right, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby adopts the 2020-2021 school calendar, providing for the opening day of school on Monday, August 17th, 2020, the ending day of school on Wednesday, May 26th, 2021, for a total school term of 186 days, as presented in the January 14th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any thoughts? We discussed it last, in December, right?
Yes.
Okay. And this is an all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. Press policy?
There were a couple of questions submitted on the press policy. One's that deal with HR business, I'll have Kristen touch on. And then there were, I believe, one other question on content, or graduation requirement of the FASSA forms. But the Board Advisor, the Superintendent's Advisory Council met in December. This was for a first read in December, and our changes are included in this packet. One second, I can pull up the questions submitted. Kristen, do you have a list of those questions for your policies, or do you need me to identify those?
I do.
Okay. Well, go ahead and address the ones in, the first one was 230, 220?
220.
220.
So, just for some background knowledge, we, every new employee signs an acknowledgement of mandatory reporter status, and then they complete a training session in GCN, which is what we use for our mandated reporting. And then additionally, Board Policy 5:90, abused and neglected child reporting spells out the reporting requirements and administrative procedures, and staff receive an annual reminder of all Board policies for which they need to be in compliance, and this policy's on the list. And then when it is suspected that, that policy is not followed, the administration completes an investigation, as they do when any staff member concern is brought to their attention, and we consult with legal counsel throughout that process.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Just because this was highlighted as a Board member responsibility, I thought it was important to hear how that information was conveyed in pursuit, so thank you.
430 was authorized investments. Deanna submitted this question, or Ms. Salas submitted this question, excuse me, and Mary and I, Mary Ann and I corrected. We took out the, we deleted the title about the superintendent and just changed it to Township Treasurer.
Okay, thank you.
460 was regarding revenue generating contract reporting. Kristen, you just want to touch on how you're doing, keeping this in compliance?
That's a requirement on the state budget form that we submit, which can be found on ISB current budget forms and past budget forms, so we complete that.
And that's on our website, correct?
I'm not certain if the state budget form is on our website, but it's on ISB's website.
Is it part of the state of the annual budget submission, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Equitable Restrooms Act, we already made some accommodations to restrooms in the past, gender-neutral bathrooms, as well as making some changing stations and some modifications to our locker rooms.
Because clearly, a number of these are state laws that went into effect 1-1, right? So I just wanted to, I'm assuming that the administration is moving forward from that unfunded mandate position, as well as the administrative requirements. I want to make sure that we're moving ahead. So is there any additional activities to be done for the Equitable Restrooms Act?
I don't think we have any other outstanding items, correct?
So are in compliance?
I believe so, yes.
480 was the adoption of the capitalization threshold.
Our administrative procedure was our capitalization threshold in the past has been $1,000. So we would keep that from an administrative procedure, and then from a budget standpoint, we can drop it into a different line item, but we'll keep that threshold for how we build our budget in terms of meeting with the department chairs and other departments to get approval for items that might be over $1,000.
Okay.
Graduation requirement FASSA was 6:30, and Beth is going to pilot, Beth Augustine and her department is going to pilot something this May, even though this is not a requirement until next year, they're going to pilot something this May with the graduating class. We do a senior survey and a final senior meeting before graduation, so they're going to pull the data on how many of those students completed the FASSA form. We also do multiple workshops on college finance and completing the FASSA form, and so we'll continue with those trends next year, and then we're going to do something in the fall where we will have students either sign the waiver that they're not completing it, or have the parents complete it.
Can we get an update on how the pilot goes in the spring? Just understand what the lift is relative to the pilot.
Yes.
Implementation, please.
530, salary history. Right now, we moved that question off of our application. We used to have it on the application, but the way we are recommending the policy is that, that additional sentence the IASB provided, that if, unless the employee's salary is part of public, a public document that's available to the public, so we'll just have to change the verbiage in our document.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't see it in the draft in the Board packets. I wanted to make sure it wasn't a drafting error.
Right, so we did check yes on that question, and then we'll add the language.
And then it gets incorporated by, okay, I wasn't sure how the document flowed together ultimately.
And then 660 was your final question on LGB, LGBTQ content, and I need to touch base with Kylie to see how we will be moving forward with the addressing it during our American History Curriculum.
Okay, so it is during the American History Curriculum, was my assumption with everything else. Okay. Thank you.
There were no other questions submitted on the policy.
We need a discussion. Bill Maher? All right, well, I guess we go for the motion, right?
All right, yes.
If there's policy, Mary Ann, and some of them deal with money, would it be safer to do a vote?
We could.
Just to be.
Cover it down.
Yeah.
Right, Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves IASB plus policy, issue 102, as presented in the January 14th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Towner? I don't know if we'll vote.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Jessica?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. All right, move on to new business, payment of bills.
I believe there was one question submitted on the bills, Kristen?
Yes, there's a question on airmark in regards to weekend special event overtime for December. So this is for any weekend rentals for December, as well as anything that we may need them for. So they do come in on Christmas to secure the stadium outside and, as well as do a building check, but this includes the other rentals that require weekend service as well.
Just the data that struck me as unusual. Okay, thank you.
That was the only question.
All right. We need to, need a motion.
Yes.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the January 14th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet. Second.
Sierra, second. Now we need to have a vote on that.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Jessica?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Want to establish a bank accounts?
Okay, this is for a first read, and we'll see how the discussion goes tonight with the Board, if we want to approve this tonight or not. We need to establish two new accounts. The first one is with First American Bank in Riverside. That is where our Board accounts are at in regards to our activity accounts. We need to establish a separate account to serve as a passer. The idea behind having this pay, this account was so that we can open a PayPal account, and what we're going to start trying to pilot as soon as we can get this implemented for the rest of the winter season is the use of credit card scanners at our gates. We're noticing a huge increase in the number of spectators that are coming to. We're noticing a huge increase in the number of spectators that are coming to events and don't have cash on hand. A lot of people use the little things on their phone, either with the Apple Pay, or, you know, they have their creditor debit card, so we wanted to try to pilot this, and Kristen needs this account, so that, I want you to explain a little more.
Yeah, so currently, we have a PayPal account, and without tying it to a bank account, it's really cumbersome to get the money, and there are also more fees associated with that. And so, I assume that in some way, shape, or form, this credit card pilot is going to be successful, I'm sure we'll have to do some tweaks, but I would venture to guess that the pilot is going to go well. And so, currently, I can't give out any bank account numbers because there's too much money in those accounts, and so should, you know, something ever get stolen or get compromised, that would put the district at liability. So by having this account, it would serve through as a pass through, so the money would never sit in there, so should someone have, ever get the account number, the district would still be protected. So this is just one of the ways that I think the district would benefit from having this account. I have checked with the auditor about creating an additional account for this purpose, because the money would flow through and either go to a board account or an activity account, depending on what the event was, and the auditor supported this idea.
Kristen, do we get the charge then for every transaction, like a regular credit card charge?
We would get a charge. PayPal, for example, has a 2.8% convenience fee, which is lower than some of the other ones, like currently for our business office, we use RevTrack, because that syncs with our software that we use in the business office, and that has, I believe, a 3% fee.
So then, how do schools handle, I mean, if they're spending eight dollars, and they're doing an eight dollar swipe, and you're paying, I mean, does the fee, is the fee not important enough for us not to do this, or are other schools charging a little bit more to cover the fee?
Kristen, I talked about this a little bit, what happens now is probably, I mean, we're using some hypotheticals and assuming, but what happens now is we probably let people into some games, and so the amount of money we'll pick up by just having the ability to either pay cash or swipe your credit card.
Right.
The increase of having those gate fees convention cover the minimal fees related to the credit card transaction, so we think it'd be a benefit for the district.
It's got a good chance to say, be a booster, and then you get gate passes.
Right.
At least music booster and athletic booster, at least you get in for sports.
It's kind of unfortunate, it's a cost of doing business, the 3%, and, you know, I mean, they have many friends with restaurants, and they spend a lot of money on credit card fees.
Yeah.
And there's no discounts, I mean, it just is the cost of, unfortunately, that's how the world works.
I mean, I've had other organizations ask me to move to an electronic check to help save them money.
Right.
Well, it says that it's piloting, I mean, how long would we go?
Well, that's why we'd like to, that's why we'd like to implement this, and, you know, we'd like to approve this tonight, if I could have at least four board member's support this tonight, so that we have, we know we have at least six or eight more between boys' basketball, girls' basketball, those are our big, that's one of our bigger draws, so I'd like to see.
Well, I think the more and more kids are paying, right, with the Apple Pay right on your phone, it's, it's the future, it's coming around, and I could load my kids' money from home, I mean, I, you know, this is, this is how it's going to be.
So do we get a fee for Apple Pay also, or Google Pay also?
We would probably have to pay them, yes, to transfer the money around.
Yeah.
If it works, and we go to Venmo or an Apple Pay.
Our first thing is just to be able to have people swipe their cards, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right. I mean, when you get that, that one on that goes on your iPad and you swipe it, that's not free, you have to pay that, that bank.
Yeah, so this is a pilot, so then you're going to gather some data on those numbers, how many people are actually using it, what the fees end up to be, and then you'll report back to us, and we can go from there, yeah?
We also have a big feeder tournament coming up in February, and that's one of the big, I mean, we get a huge draw for those, and originally, we were looking into, if it was, was it cost effective for the district to put an ATM machine in that athletic area so that when people came with no money, you know, could you defer them to the ATM machine? That was First National Bank of Brookfield, and our volume would not be the right, would be not, would not be sufficient to justify doing an ATM, but he also recommended having the credit card swipe at the gates, because more and more people are not carrying cash, and this would be the right way to, you know.
And this is the only thing going through that account?
Correct.
At this point, yeah.
So you said you talked to the auditor, and you were comfortable, what do they need at year end now? Do they'll need a balance of, do you have to show 12 months of zero balance?
Yeah.
Do they indicate what they're going to need to see?
They did not, but the beauty with PayPal is you can set up different events in there, and so it will be very clear as to what the money is tied to for that event, and so then we'll be able to track from this bank account where we're transferring that amount of money to, so it will be really transparent, because we'll set up every, every separate event, we'll be able to track, and then we'll track whether or not it goes into, like, boys' basketball activity account or boys' basketball board account, and so we'll be able to show off.
So there's never any balance in the bank account itself, it doesn't earn any interest? It only stays?
We do not plan on keeping the balance, we plan on transferring that money right away, so.
Okay, so what's the policy, and how quickly, do you see right away, is it the next business day?
We need to work through that with PayPal. Right now, with PayPal, what we have is, we get that money, and we can request a check, and in two weeks, they'll send us a check in the mail, so it's really cumbersome, and then there's a fee for the check, and so.
Oh, no, it does not sound ideal right now. I would just like to see what the, and not the turnout, but just that the policy is buttoned down, that there is a, you know, every 24 hours, once every Monday, whatever is, it makes sense that it gets cleared out, so my guess is, from the auditor perspective, they're going to want to make sure there's never any interest bearing.
Yeah.
Why would we not, Deanna, why would we want it to not, to be never any interest bearing? Why would they?
Because it's a pass through account. And then if you're putting value in the account, then you're, then it's impacting the financials. So the idea is just to act as a temporary holding place, want to make sure it's only temporary, and not, oh, there's 13 cents that accrued here, and now we've got to account for it somehow.
I don't even think PayPal, I mean, I put money in PayPal, and...
No, it's not PayPal.
It's not PayPal, it's a bank account.
Bank account.
Oh, the bank account, I'm sorry.
PayPal will never give you any interest, for sure.
No, they get charged as money, too.
Fees, fees, fees and more fees.
I just would like to say, I misunderstood. Yeah, I absolutely support this, I just like to see it fleshed out in terms of how it's going to transpire for the pilots, maybe at a next meeting, just to, as the pilot gets kicked off, how it actually will work would be helpful.
Once we get the bank account set up, then I can, yes, I can work with the bank.
The second establishment account is in, while meeting with the First National Bank of Brookfield, Mary Ann and I were dealing with a different issue, and so we currently have a scholarship account fund that's set up, and this has been in place since 1984, and the names on the account, only Mary Ann is listed on the account, and then there's previous superintendents, but I'm not listed on the account. The second thing is that it's at a PNC Bank, which is no longer in Riverside, so we thought that this would be a good opportunity to move that account to the First National Bank of Brookfield, so that we're doing some banking in both Brookfield and Riverside. It's only about, it'll be a transfer of like five or $6,000. The trust, the way the is set up, is that Mary Ann receives the check, goes to PNC, deposits the check, and then each year, the math department determines the recipients of the Swanson Scholarship, and then Mary Ann has to go and get the checks cut, and they also charge us fees for the checks, and so the Bank of Brookfield will waive those fees for the cost of the checks. So it's just some, it's more of just housekeeping and...
Yeah, it seems pretty straightforward, and...
But according to board policy, we need board approval to open these two accounts.
In favor?
Do you want me to read the resolution?
I think, yeah, we need to make sure we have...
So let's pull, I mean, do we need to, I think we can vote on this tonight, unless there's...
Okay.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District, High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the resolution to open a bank account for electronic payments as presented in the January 14, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Keep going.
Oh, both of them? Okay, sorry. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the creation of a bank account at First American Bank in Riverside, and the transferring...
First American Bank in Brookfield.
No, 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 First American Bank in Riverside, and the transferring the account balance for the Swanson Scholarship Fund currently at PNC Bank and the First National Bank of Brookfield, as presented in the January 14, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
So we need to change that, because it does need to be...
No, 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 that's correct.
It's correct, it's correct, as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Historic property resolution?
Formality. This is again, something we do every year, to make sure that historic property resolution does not impact the levy of the District 208.
Three, zero.
Two twenty.
Page 229.
Two twenty-nine, excuse me.
We need to read the motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the historic property resolution that certain assessment relief provided by the Illinois Property Tax Code for historic buildings not apply to taxes that are levied by the Board of Education in School District 208, as presented in the January 14, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Student Maintenance Project Grant, first read?
I thought there's one before.
No, Board Member/Employee and Employee Expenses.
Board Member/Employee Expenses Resolution.
Another formality that went into place either last year or the year before, that the state requires each year, the board approve a resolution acknowledging the expenses for board member expenses throughout the year. Our current cap is set not to exceed $1,500 for the duration of a school year, and includes travel, meal, and lodging expenses. This is something that we have never, we don't usually go to conferences or stay overnight or do those things, but in the event, we do send somebody, because the limit that is set also applies to employees, so we do have sometimes employees who are attending a conference for PD purposes, and so it specifically lays out what the requirements of reimbursement are, and what their designated meal, money, and lodging expenses, et cetera.
All right, any discussion on that? Motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the attached resolution from District Legal Counsel to be in compliance with Board Policy 2:125, Board Member Expenses, and 5:60 Expenses, as presented in the January 14, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second, I would just like to add a comment here. This board has been very generous with the district. This board goes to a conference every year, and as Dr. Skink has said, nobody is submitting hotel costs to stay overnight. Most people are getting themselves there and back, and so it is recommended that board members be trained, and do their training, and go to the meetings, and this board, it, keeping to the vision of the district, has carried their own expenses, and so that should be publicly set, even though it's the right for everybody who drove down three days, four days to these meetings, and a couple of you stayed overnight and paid for that yourself, so, you know, thank you, and it's the, what you give to the district.
Besides the time?
Besides the time, many, many people had to take a vacation day, exactly, exactly, and nobody asked, you know, for compensation on that either. Sitting in the delegate meetings, people drive long distance to meetings, and again, it has supported that, when people have to dig into their own personal expenses to do this volunteer work, that there should be some compensation, and it's never been, you know, accessed here, so.
Well said, good comment. So, we had a second, so we got a roll call.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, now can we go to the maintenance project grant?
Yes, you can.
School project maintenance grant, this is something we put in for before the states just put out this new grant application. We did this back in 2014, when we started the field project, and we had a small roof repair, it was an additional $50,000 that we were able to use, it has to be for projects that are ready to go, which is our, obviously approved the roof bid tonight, so we would be, if we apply for this and get it, we would apply that $50,000 to our roofing project this summer.
I'd also add that priority in this grant is given to life safety projects, and so we have to demonstrate what amendment it is, et cetera, so our roof project would need that priority. This also is not a grant that the state offers every year, so it's not that we haven't applied since 2014, this is the first time it's become available since then.
So just a question, how do we get noticed of grant opportunities from the state? I mean, this is the first one I think I've seen an application for.
They'll come out, they come out from the state's Board of Education, will get notices. There's not many.
I was going to ask what their frequency was.
Yeah, that's not many.
I would just encourage us to apply for every possible grant.
Correct.
Right?
They have to have some extra money laying around. They ought to just pay their bills on time, but, you know.
This is a first read, it's up to the board if you'd like to approve it, so that Kristen could get it submitted faster.
When would it go to vote, the call?
Yeah, but I, again, it's just the right, that we can apply for it, and complete the application, you have to have board approval to complete the grant application. So if she's going to complete it with Carrie, the sooner you give her permission to submit it, the worst that could happen is we don't get the grant.
I was just going to say, like, do the odds decrease of us being with the grant?
I would think the sooner we want to get it in.
The longer.
Right.
So again, we have this conversation about voting on stuff the first time it's brought.
Right, but this isn't something that, like, I mean, to let this sit for two weeks, I don't know if there's any, to any benefit, it's just to say, hey, yeah, apply to get $50,000, there's not something to really consider, or, I don't even, is there grant applica, I mean...
The application's in the board packet, it's a very straightforward application. On page 239 is the application, and then this grant requires, since there's a matching component from the district, this grant requires board approval and signature from the board president. Those forms are included in the board packet as well.
We, but we have, this is going to go to a project that we're going to pay for anyway, so finding the matching funds is not, I mean, we budgeted for this, right? So this is truly a bonus.
Yeah, we have the life safety funds for the project, this would just save us...
So this is, this is one of those things, I understand Laura's question, this is one of those things, like, we're not asking you to approve something, or we're going to spend money we've never spent money on before, trying to push something through, this is kind of similar to the, to the, to the bank account, or like when we approve the, you know, DLAs thing, this will, this should only benefit us by doing it sooner. I mean, if it just came out, and the application just came available, we just approved tonight the 730 we're going to spend on the roof, so if this gives us a chance to make that 680 instead of 730, I don't know what the benefit of letting it sit for another two weeks.
So, tell a little shot, will you guys, I mean, I think we know where Laura said to move, or you get, I'll think we should... Yeah, what, I'm fine with it tonight, I don't see the downside, by approving it tonight, I think we should, I respect Laura's opinion on, you know, getting the multiple reads, but we should also have some flexibility for certain instances like this. Yeah, I mean, when we did the... I don't see downside or how we're going to get hurt. We got, we got those bids, we had separate meeting, we had first read, we had second one, I mean...
I would just hate to lose the money, because every school district's going to jump on this.
Well, everyone has...
That has life safety work.
Just jumping all over stuff, you might play around. You, what are your thoughts?
I am not in favor of approving it tonight, and here's why, I think this is not simply a grant application, it's a matching grant, right? So it involves an expenditure of district funds. I think in the case of, if it were simply a grant application, I would even question if it had come in front of the board for board approval, I would expect that we would have to accept a grant, should we win it, that seems like an appropriate board action. That seems like an appropriate Board action, but the idea of the administration seeking a grant, I'm not clear it actually requires Board action. But in this case, the, the grant application is committing district dollars. And I hear what you're saying about this being dollars we've already committed, but in terms of the, the precedent matter, you know, I, I do think for an expenditure of fifty thousand, that's the match to the fifty thousand possible grant, we should have a little more deliberation. Not that I have anything else to add to it, I will certainly be in favor of it. I just think from a process perspective, because this is a matching grant. So again, I'm, I'm addressing this from a larger policy perspective. I do not, um, I mean, I, I would wait for Ms. Matana to say otherwise, but most grant programs have a deadline and so as long as you're applying by the deadline, as opposed to, it's not a rolling grant. But if it's a rolling grant, then I might have a different opinion.
Do you not believe it's a rolling grant?
We do not have a policy that requires two reads. It's just something I tried to put in place so that the Board had time to discuss it and make sure we weren't forcing it through.
Well, we have a policy for two reads on expenditures.
I think we have a policy, it's just a standard that we-
It's just something I put in place to try to discuss it at a count. I don't think there's a formal Board policy that you need two reads on anything. Because if the Board choose, we didn't have to run a second meeting because technically it's just a committee of the-
Well, I've been, I've been hearing that there's a two, a two-board meeting policy, so is there or is there not?
There is not a policy, it is something that I've-
A practice.
Practiced and I've implemented with the Board so that the Board has time to discuss things, but there is no formal policy that we have two reads.
Is that your understanding, Laura?
I don't, it, it could be, but it was something that we maintained for eight years.
But for what, what was the purpose, what was, what were we trying to avoid?
Well, for things like that, to now think about that, you know, something that we didn't catch upfront. There was a couple of things that were presented to us. We want to, um, submit this earlier so we don't lose it. But the fact is, if there's a deadline, nothing happens before the deadline. So just because you got there quicker doesn't mean you might get it and somebody-
And I think you and I actually are in agreement on this matter, I guess I'm just talking about big picture. Why was the two reading-
So that we could mull things over, think about it, you go back, you have a conversation now. Then when you go back, oftentimes something would percolate in your mind, given the conversation you had at the table. You'd look at it again, maybe call back, or, or maybe not.
Excuse me, I, I think it gives a good chance to-
It's two weeks, we're talking two weeks.
Constituents should go out and you kind of, you might know someone that knows something about that business or whatever.
Yeah, and I don't want to be misleading, I mean, any grant opportunity, absolutely, we should be applying to every single grant. I think my concern specific to this one, it is the matching fund issue and to me, that's an expenditure.
Well, I think it goes back to Kristen, is there any downside to voting for it on the twenty-fourth?
The deadline is, I believe, February fourteenth.
So we can vote for it on the twenty-fourth, it's just not a big deal.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll keep it as it is.
Thank you.
First read.
So we would need to make this, uh, special meeting then for the Cal because technically we're not supposed to vote on items at the Cal, so we have to call a special meeting because our business means that we're supposed to vote on stuff.
Then it would be the fourteenth, if, because that's the next meeting.
And that's too late.
That's too late.
And then we wouldn't have something.
Yes.
So.
So that's a different set of facts, right?
That's a difference, so that's why we have this discussion, right? Because we got to talk about the fact, so where it comes out.
So.
So where is it?
I think we're being, I think we're getting in our own way.
Yeah, I think sometimes we make it more complicated than it needs to be.
So I, I think I, I understand where Laura's coming from and like, if it's something new and the first time we're saying it to you and we're asking to spend money, that was the reason we put that in place is like, so we're not just rushing to spend money or rushing to do something. And we don't think about the big picture, uh, the impact of-
I would agree, we didn't want the administration to come and say, oh, check a little sky's falling, we need to have this money because, because, and, and money is very tight, we're running, you know, we're, we're thinking about every single thing and, um, and, and we wanted to investigate things more than from Thursday to Tuesday. We wanted Thursday to Tuesday in a month, right? And that was, that was, I think, the, the spirit, which I wholly believe in.
And, and we wrote this tonight as a first read.
Yes.
And, and that's fine. And, and we always put a resolution, so if the Board says, hey, I don't think we need a second read on this. So all I would say to you is, if we're doing it just to do it, well, then, I mean, so like, okay, we just approved the bank account, we didn't do two reads on that because it made sense to pilot it and try it. So I, the only reason we said you could approve it tonight is because we already approved the money we're matching. If the Board doesn't want to do that, or a majority of the Board doesn't want to do that, that's fine. But I want to make sure that we understand that there, there is no set policy for this.
Well, I'll just, I'll just say, I'm, you know, I'm uncomfortable with a lot of things that came today that were first reads and we're approving. We're approving, going after the PayPal, the new program, that's a significant program. We had a nice little discussion and we approved it the first time we brought it out. And then the bank accounts, that's again, a first read and we approved it. So those are two things that came out.
That's the same thing.
That's the same one.
They're the same thing, but yet they're different. Because you could have approved half and not the other. You could have said, we're just going to approve the one account and not the PayPal. So you could have split them apart.
True.
That was two significant issues to, to move to the PayPal and to accept because we discussed using credit cards and got away from that becau- and actually increased our fees. We had a long conversation with, uh, Mr. Grichen to increase our fees to cover credit card cost.
Yeah.
And we also had a report and how much money we were paying for credit card costs. So we thought about it. So now, here we are again, and we quickly said, yes, we'll do that. And it's fine, it's a pilot, but it came out as a first read and we passed it.
I don't remember being favored.
Two things today. Now, this is another one that we're, it's a match and I didn't even catch the fact that it's a match and we're going to spend that. What I know about grant programs is rarely are they introduced and due within a month. So this has been out for a while. Maybe we just saw it. I can't believe that, you know, we've only had two weeks to respond to this.
Well, the grant application came out in December after the December Board Meeting, so this is the first opportunity to bring it to the Board.
And so, you know, we got two weeks. Um, we've already rushed through a few things that actually are spending money and, uh, um, we've asked for some report about how much money that, uh, will come into the PayPal and eventually we'll probably want to report on what that cost and is it offsetting not having it? But I, I don't think we should continue to do business like that every time it's first introduced and then passing it.
Well, I would just say that I would like you to call the vote and if the members that don't agree can vote no.
Well, if you do that, think about that, so how do we want to do? Because if we say no, it's not that I'm opposed to the grant, but I'm opposed to approving it today. So if we call the vote and we say no and it fails, does that mean now that the grant has failed permanently?
No, I think you can call it no, you can straw, you could pull the Board on whether to vote tonight or vote next in two weeks.
Bring something back up for another vote too, I mean, we had a, you know, when you vote no, it doesn't mean, it doesn't come back around.
But you could, you could just straw poll the Board right now, with the Board, get, if you have a majority of people that want to vote tonight, or if you have, if you don't, then we wait till the next meet. We just got to make sure we call a special meet.
So I think, I think we probably have enough people that, um, that want to vote tonight, so I think we should just go ahead and, and read the motion and call a vote.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, um, was on the ISB website looking at the official grant. The Board of Education Township High School District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois approves the resolution approving the School Maintenance Project Grant as presented in the January fourteenth, 2020 Board Agenda Packet.
All right, what happens, do we have a second?
Second.
Sierra seconded, we'll have to do a roll call.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
No.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
No.
Mr. Smithy?
Yes. Uh, matters for closed session.
Were we going to talk about what Mona brought up earlier?
Right, in our-
No, discussion, yeah, discussion items requested.
We're going to talk about, I already forgot, but-
The February twenty-second meeting.
Right, we got to do visitor statement first.
Invites, invitees.
Yeah, before closed session?
Yeah, but I think, uh, on the, according to the agenda, West just states the matters for closed session.
We're at, uh, oh, okay.
Right.
We're not saying we're going in, we're in nine and a half.
No, we're saying matters are personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, sale or lease of property, pending intimate litigation, collecting negotiations, and school safety. Then we go to visitor statements, or, this, this is another opportunity. You come back, we've had fun, man.
You're leaving!
All right. Uh, since no one's here, I don't, or, no visitor, visitor statements. Bob, you want to talk?
No comment.
Okay, well, good. Uh, discussion items requested.
Okay, so I sent the, uh, I sent the Board in the Friday update, the date is for February twenty-second. The IASB Coordinator meeting, Ms. Nikia Hall. Uh, we discussed having approximately, she'd like to keep it to thirty to thirty-five participants uh, so that she feels that, uh, it could still be an effective group, but not too large.
How's that split up with?
Uh, it was in the Friday update, so what I'm thinking, first of all, there was a question on the location, so it'll be in the Alumni Lounge on district, on campus. Uh, the schedule is from nine to, uh, two. Uh, I sent out a draft agenda in the Friday update, so, uh, there's a section for introduction and overview, and understanding of values and beliefs, which will be a small group activity. Uh, some topics would be, do we, you know, what do we value and believe about students and learning, teachers and teaching, the responsibility of the school to the community, and the community to the school. The second part of the agenda, the third step, part of the agenda was then reviewing our current mission statement. You know, is our mission station, statement still relevant? Does our mission statement specify our purposes and reason for existing? There's a break and then ten forty-five to eleven forty-five would be a SWAT activity, which is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. What is going well, what needs improvement? And the following categories would frame that discussion, student learning and needs, programs and services, both extracurricular and co-curricular, district facilities and finances, human resources and staff, and community and district relations. Uh, so this is the draft agenda, then there would be a debrief with the public and then there would be a break and then there was some time, uh, from twelve thirty to two for the Board and Administration to debrief and figure out what the next steps are, whether there would be another public session or if there had to be a workshop for the Board and Administration to work out things that they heard at the, from the feedback in the groups.
So the start is nine to, say, noon is absolutely an open session, correct?
Correct.
And we invite the stakeholder groups to come, but that doesn't mean that other people couldn't-
Observe.
What is similar to this setting, observe what's going on, correct?
Yeah, I need to, yeah.
Because it's a public meeting, correct?
Correct, and I need to find out, you know, that's a good point, and since all seven Board Members are here and we are talking district business, like, do we have to start off with a pledge and do a visitor comment session? And then go into the activity? Uh, because sometimes that's a formality of being an open meeting.
Well, and then, as Mona was saying, if other people are observing, can, and if you have groups and active conversation, the people who are observing, do they have opportunity to also?
Well, I think that's where we have to balance of what she was saying of, at what side, at what point do our groups get too large? Um, so I had sent out a draft to the Board on Friday. You know, to roughly get to the thirty or thirty-five, we have the Board and the Superintendent, would be eight people, uh, three to five administrators, three to five representatives from the RBEA, which is our staff, our teaching staff, uh, or they can have support staff. And then that leaves us roughly ten to fifteen on how we, and then, you know, what the Board wants to do. We can either go one representative, you know, formally invite, send an invitation to each parent group to send a representative, like our PTO, our music boosters, our boosters, and our RBF. We have the option if we could, wanted to extend the invitation, uh, to each, uh, of our main village boards, where, where a majority of our students come from and maybe they want to send a rep. Uh, we could send it to, uh, our, our main feeder districts and see if they want to send a rep from their Board or from their Administration. You know, the, the only issue, so she wanted to make sure that you had some, you know, ideas and if there's anybody else the Board wanted to add, um, you know, by extending these invitations so that at least you have somewhat of an idea how many of your people are going to participate. Where if you just put it out there and then no, five people show up because it's a Saturday, you know, it's not going to be as productive. And you could have the reverse, you could have fifty people or a hundred people show up, right? So I think that's why she was saying-
That's a good, a good problem to have, perhaps.
Correct, right.
Um, you know, I think, uh, you know, and I, I guess, whatever, I started talking, so I'll finish. But, um, you know, you have like those people and I would admit, and I would lump us all into that category here sitting at this table, that always do, right? Like, we are always willing to, um, donate our time and, you know, we're, we've all been like the Little League coach and the Brownie leader and the, you know, all these things. And, and we just do it because it's like the way we're wired. And then you have those people that sometimes do, but they need to be like asked and, and, and kind of brought into the fold. And then you have like the people that never do. So sometimes I'm really interested in kind of what that middle group has to say, because I, you know, um, so, I mean, I think most of the people on this list are, you know, the doers, which is awesome, we want their input. I'm just wondering if there's a spot for sort of, you know, another-
A really good point, but I'm wondering if that's going to be a takeaway from this, is that you're going to get the, the, the people who are like, yes, sign me up for an all-day session on Saturday? And maybe one of the takeaways may be, now we've got to dig a little deeper into a-
Yeah, I'm just wondering-
No, I think you're, you're absolutely right.
So you're getting a group of, the people mentioned, these, these are individuals who are highly invested and it's a different kind of stakeholder than the average family or the family who sends their kids to working and they don't have time to be involved or they're new to the community or whatever. Whatever comes out of the workshop, because everybody can't be in the workshop, I think the next step is, how do we get that product into the hands, into a larger, to kind of present what that came out to, to the larger community, to say, does this represent you? Because we may find out, you know, we have teachers, we have Board Members, we're all very opinionated and we think we know. We may find out we don't know.
That's what, that's what I was wondering, like, with the parent groups, if we send the general thing to each of their Presidents and say, would you like to send a representative?
I like that idea of identifying the groups.
So that's why I sent, what I did on Friday.
Within their unit would come.
Within their group, who they want to send.
My only thought of sending them, and my only thought of sending the invitation to each village president or mayor would say, do you want to send someone from your Board who was elected by your constituents? Since this is the public, you know, do you want to send someone from your Board to be participating in this? So I was trying to figure out how we can get somebody, a representative at the meeting. But that also has perspective of hopefully a larger audience, you know, because like-
I think that's the point of it.
Someone from the village board representative.
Has a different perspective.
They may come from the tax perspective that Laura's always bringing up, for the people whose kids are gone or moved on or don't have kids here but live in the community and-
Right, we need the people who their kids have graduated because they have plenty to say, trust me. And we need somebody from our, our business bureaus, you know, every community has one and they're paying for a lot of this too.
So another, uh, I could also send this to the Riverside Chamber and Brookfield Chamber.
Right.
And ask if they want to send a representative.
And many of them are supportive, but they have things to say.
So, and another one of the stakeholder groups that you didn't mention here was the students.
Okay.
And our, our senior center, I think every community has a, a senior center.
So we got to figure out who we're cutting, because then we're starting to get over the thirty thirty-five.
Well, but our seniors, we have a significant senior citizen population.
Would they be represented by, isn't that the responsibility of the, uh, the village reps? Would they be represented by, isn't that the responsibility of the, the village reps? To represent that population?
Well, the village reps are representing young families that are not at the high school yet. They're representing families that aren't.
They're representing all families, right?
Right. But you have seniors who are living either on fixed incomes, pensions, no pensions, or fight, you know. I don't know, I think we need, I hear from seniors, they have plenty to say to us. There's three, what, three senior centers, one in North Riverside, one in Brookfield, one in Riverside.
How, we had a good...
Well, that, I, I think the Brookfield one is run by the rec department, which would, the rec department takes its direction from the Brookfield Village Board, so you've kind of gone all the way around there. Well, I think we, or I think we'd make an open represent, an open invitation, or find somebody who might represent. I know, um, there are organizations that have classes, or the Y has the silver stickers, and you have many of your local senior citizens there, or grandparents of kids, or some...
Yeah, do we, do we have this one as a, as a workshop, and then we do a series of general meetings?
So I think practically speaking, it's, it's the fourteenth already of January, right? So these invites, they've gotta go out tomorrow, right? And, I mean, maybe this suggestion is, the invites to the groups that have been outlined, plus some of the additions here, see what the actual attendance is. It's a big commitment, it's a big time commitment to spend your Saturday. And then, you know, this group with our, our various rolodexes looks at it and says, oh, we don't have anyone who appears to represent the senior population, maybe we should target someone in particular. I ask, who's got a star at some point?
I think, you know, to, I think, having a board of, we're gonna invite you, or we're gonna invite you.
Well, I think the other thing, too, is, uh, you know, a good thing to remember is that we want, the reason, the purpose of doing this is so that it wasn't, you know, some of the feedback you heard from when we met with the union a few years ago was that, hey, it's not just the board making the decisions, right? Or get, at least there's opportunities for input, or, so I think if you're sitting down with thirty or thirty-five people, I mean, that's a big start of a collaborative process. And you could say, hey, we got some input from staff, we got some input from parent groups, village leaders, students, right? Or people who wanted to, I think that at least just shows that it's more than just seven people sitting at a table or in a room making a decision. They're trying to get input, you know.
I'm trying to just clarify, so let's say we have thirty-five people. We invite all of these different stakeholder groups to choose a representative. Is it not the work of that group, then, on that Saturday, to come up with a strategic plan that will be in place three, five years, whatever the timeline is? And then the work product that comes out of that session is the strategic plan we're using to move forward?
I don't think we're doing a strategic, we're not doing a strategic plan, though.
Or is it like, what, what the work product that comes out of that day, then, like Laura was just saying, does that then go, and is that then presented to other groups to, to give feedback on? And then we're gonna meet again?
I think that would be, that work, that work plan would then come back to, we would then develop a strategic plan. You're not doing a strategic plan in three hours.
No, we would do, we would take the feedback.
Well, I've been in districts that we've done a Saturday, and we've had fifty people, and the ISB has facilitated that, and at the end of the day, we had a one, we had a working document that that was our strategic plan. And they took the ideas and put it in a glossy, and they sent it out to everyone and said, this is what the stakeholders agreed upon, and then that was that.
I think the first idea of doing this February twenty-second was setting and identifying the goals and direction with, for the district. And then, then based on this feedback, I'm, I would assume there would, seeing how this goes, if there's more work to be done, there would be a second session scheduled, where then we start laying out a plan with these same attendees about, okay, is it realistic to, you know, is there something specific that needs to be more laid out in a three to five year plan?
Well, I think if there's a second session, like, we have to be clear if we're inviting people to let them know you're not just signing up for one Saturday, you could potentially, if that's the case.
I mean, I can, I can speak for how the D ninety-six strategic plan went, where there was a kickoff similar to this and this discussion, and it was a lot of people from different groups. And then people in that room were asked, okay, who really has the, the time and energy to commit over the next six to nine months to really drill down on facilities? And then you're part of a working group that comes up with a...
Right, because when you do the SWAT.
Yes.
Groups can form out of that, right? Based on start, stop, like, don't like, right? Have a passion for.
Okay, as long as we're clear on that, because I've been, when I was in a different district, we did it on a Saturday, and we walked away with a pretty good work product that was in place for several years.
And, I think we need to clarify, like, I, I think we need to clarify, where, right now, setting district strategic goals and direction, it's not a strategic plan of how we're achieving. So right now, we may walk out of this meeting with these groups and find out that a lot of the stuff we're doing is okay, but maybe they want a student advisor. Maybe they want, maybe the general consensus is, hey, spend a little more and, and put some stuff back to the classroom, or put some, put, implement different programs. I think you gotta go through this kind of first to see if there's a need for a formal strategic plan.
Or just some tweaking to what we're doing and what's driving the board's decision making.
Yeah, the day's gonna inform, probably that twelve-thirty to two o'clock piece. Or maybe we need to, we actually depend, we don't need to get a sense of that before, or maybe a little bit beforehand, if we need to know if it's gonna be an open or a closed session, but I feel like...
Well, like, and I think any product that comes out of there, there should be a period of public comment, where it gets posted on the website, and there's opportunity for people to read it and react to it.
Sure, I agree.
And maybe nobody comes, but, you know, you could have just, you know, a quick, like, survey thing, but people will look at it and either react one way or another, say, yes, I think you hit it, the target, or no, you missed this piece, or whatever. And that's how you sweep up the rest of your name.
Yeah, I, I think, I, I think you're absolutely correct. I think this is just kind of identifying how we're doing and what we're missing and not doing. And then, and then what comes from this meeting is whether or not we need to, wow, we're really way off, we need to go a hundred and eighty degrees in a different direction. Well, then you're gonna probably need a three or five years strategic plan of how you're gonna do all that. If this is more of, hey, we need to make a commitment to this, and we identify some key norms for the district or goals for the district, post those, create a formal document, get it out on the website, send it out in the newsletter, and don't do anything with it for a month or two, and let people read it and come to, and encourage people to come to make comments at a board meeting if they have concerns or think something's missing, right?
Right. So my only comment to that, and, and I agree, that has to be kind of a deliberative process, is the agenda is weighted very heavy on the philosophical for that first, you know, hour and a half, the underlying values and beliefs, the mission statement, and then I think where we're all talking and we're really spending time is on this, you know, on the SWAT. So my suggestion back to ISBE is, we condense that morning, the, the very early. My, my strong belief is our mission statement is, has been touched in the last ten years, it's fairly comprehensive. And it, and it is, it provides a good umbrella for these discussions. I would be quite surprised if it needed a complete overhaul, right? So I think what, but where we hear concerns and comments around very specific things that fall in the SWAT analysis.
I would agree.
Maybe we spend a little bit more time on that piece. And then, um, part of that is, you know, not to go in, not to have anyone having these discussions, have them going blind. I mean, I think the, the administration did a nice job of the communication survey, right? And so if the group that's talking about community and district relations, are they truly aware of what the current communication status is? Let's have them react to something present day in each of these buckets, as opposed to just giving their opinion. Because I think that will add less value.
I would agree that nine to ten forty-five, an hour and forty-five minutes. That, that could probably shorten, so that a good hour and a half can be focused more on the SWAT.
Yeah.
Or we, or we flop the underlying values and beliefs, but that up to the SWAT, so that we kind of talk about, okay, what's important to the large group, right? We identify some key values or beliefs, and then we could go on our small, this will all be in small groups, groups of five, groups of six, you know, and then be able, have the ability to report out from each group on different things. So, I, that's why it says draft in the right corner. So, is everybody in the same agreement, like, we, we want to see more time dedicated to the SWAT and our values and beliefs, and less the mission, and just kind of overview?
What are, what are your swap, the SWAT and the values and beliefs? Do we have two values and beliefs before we do SWAT?
I think so. Can you get to SWAT if you don't, like, that's your, your basement, your, your foundation, right? Like, you have to kind of, it might not take long, but I think it has to be done first in order to set the stage and, and a good foundation for the rest of the discussions that we will have.
So the values and the beliefs are how we're judging ourselves to get to, when we get to the SWAT? Or what we, based on these values, are we doing this good, are we doing this bad, how can we better, so?
And then even that, though, you start with that, and then you say, well, does your mission statement truly represent your underlying values and beliefs? And, so I'm, I'm, I'm going out on a limb and saying, this discussion can be moved up and condensed a little bit.
Right, right, it may not take that long.
Mm-hmm, and, and they have a formula for doing this, right? They've facilitated these discussions before.
So would you like me to leave it the same, or maybe then flip, put the, after the introductions, the mission, and then? So that a majority of the time is the values, beliefs, and the SWAT?
Well, I think what you'll want to do is circle back. So you'll start with your mission and vision, most people, because it's a starting point.
We don't have a vision, so it's just a mission.
Okay, mission will be slightly gun-shy about changing it, but after you do your activity, it will become obvious that something is either missing or not there, or whatever, and then circled back to that.
I think that's what the whole, okay, so I'm swapping mission with values and beliefs, flip-flopping those. I shouldn't say swap, flipping.
And, and I was just being, just very controlling and just saying the time, you know, nine-thirty to ten-fifteen doesn't need to happen, right? It could be nine-thirty to nine-forty-five.
Correct.
So that...
Or it could be nine to ten, so I think...
Right. I, I just think that the facilitator needs to understand that...
We want a majority of our time on the values and on the SWAT.
Yes, so adjust accordingly.
Yep. Okay, so back to my original question, am I sending it to, that I put in the Friday update? You think I should send it to those representative groups for now? See what the feedback is, and then if we need to open it.
Do you have the student, um...
I do not have student stuff.
I think we should add students.
Yeah, I think we should add students.
Yeah, we talked about adding them.
Yep. So I'm keeping some reps from the parent groups, reps from the village boards, rep from the feeder schools, and reps from student SA.
And what about our business? I mean, we're talking three people.
Riverside Chamber and Brookfield Chamber, okay?
Our chambers, yeah.
So how many does that put us at?
I think we'll still be close, I think we'll still be under forty, because I don't know how many students are gonna want to come in on a Saturday, if they have conflicting events, but I'll extend it to SA's executive board. The feeder schools, I'm assuming some of them are doing some things with their own referendums, and I will extend that invitation, so. Key is, I got, the key is, I got thirty-five or forty people to send an invitation to. We might only get twenty people at RSVP, and we could open it up.
So why people get someone?
We could open that up.
I think so.
Okay? Mary Ann, should, we should probably put this, leave this on as a discussion item for the next meeting as well.
So when will you be sending those invites out?
Before the coming. But I don't, I won't have RSVPs, I'm not gonna send them out by the end of this week and then have them respond by the end of next week in the board pack, you know what I mean, so.
Right, because it'll take them. So you'll have RSVPs by the next meeting, you think?
I won't.
I just think again, from schedules and...
I could always, I could always share that in a Friday update, though. If I tell everybody I'd like to know by February fourteenth or February seventh, that still gives us fifteen days if I need to open it to the community.
Again, schedules are just hard for everybody. My only, um, other tweak is on the categories, let's just separate facilities and finances. I think based on some of the comments and discussion we've had here, I think finances is kind of a separate entity from facilities.
Well, let's take a look at that. Is everybody okay with those categories? And so my, my, um, I'm not quite sure with human resources staff, I mean, unless, thinking, let's, I mean, it's like our teaching staff, but could that be tied in under like student learning and needs? Are you okay, is everybody okay with these? Those topics under the SWAT? So the student learning, programs, and services. What's in parentheses says extracurricular, co-curricular, so basically I'm thinking it's all the extracurricular and co-curricular activities and services we provide students outside of just their traditional classes.
Right, because that, well, you just, that last part is the first part, student learning and needs.
That's number one, that's the first bullet. Second bullet is program and services, right? And we have district facilities, district finances, human resources slash staff.
That should stay there.
Community and district relations.
And then are you opposed to asking the group if somebody believes there should be another category?
Oh, like, at the session?
At the session.
Yeah, I think, I think then we, this is very open dialogue, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't seem comprehensive, but somebody may have an idea that we...
Cafeteria items.
Maybe, who knows?
But that's program and services. Okay, you're gonna put me in a bucket.
I'm gonna put them on.
I mean, somebody might bring, because, you know, some of the Chicago schools are doing, or some of the magnet schools, not necessarily public schools, um, like wellness. You know, they have health facility at the school and psychiatric, you know, psychologists and social workers, so that's a whole different area of service that's in some of the public schools.
Wouldn't that be under student needs?
Where human resources and staff.
Well, how is that different than what happens in the classroom? It's so, it's qualitatively different to not have programs and services.
If someone wants to add something, we could probably, we could see if it fits in a bucket, or how to make those buckets. I don't think we need to decide that today. I think our first item is to get the invitations out to the set invitees, see what kind of response we get. Right?
Sounds good.
Yeah, but think about that and draw on it, and we'll talk about it next meeting, too. Because we can say, what about this one, or, you know, that's when we go back and we kick it around the neighborhood, get on the train with the guys, and, oh, you think about this? And we come up with three more ideas.
My advice to the board would be, you want to, let's see how, you know, yeah, you're right, people have other things, or this grows or blossoms into something, but you want to use this one. That's why I'm saying this, I would, this isn't really a strategic one. This is kind of like a, a barometer or a measurement of how, how do you think things are going?
What's important.
Right, if we leave this...
She understands that, so she under, she knows how to best facilitate the meeting.
Correct, and I, I will work with her on that, that's not a problem.
Yeah, because she has a clear idea of that.
Good. Alright, you're feeling better. Consideration items for future meetings?
I actually, you have one, that I'm sorry, that I've been keeping around for a while. And Kylie doesn't have to come, but if she could give us another update, I think the last update we had on the, um, oh, God, no, the name escapes me.
Blended learning?
Blended learning, thank you.
It's scheduled for like January or February.
Oh, it is, so it's coming up?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And I have one, I would like to look at, um, school consolidation as an issue. I can do a little work and send it to, to Wes, and he can look at that. When I went to some of the West Cook meetings, other people at the West Cook meeting said there's a consultant who does like a mock model, they look at the different contracts, they look at money, they look at the need of the district. And just as if you're doing a drawing, it gives you an idea whether or not you think it's gonna do what you thought it might or might not. And, um, so, well, I keep thinking that a consolidated district for, where you have a single high school with several districts feeding up into it seems like a good idea, it may or may not be.
Yeah, I think that, you know, when, I know when I first, a few years back, I got on, I talked to, uh, particularly Gary about it, and it got complicated really fast. In that, all the districts, all the constituents of a number of the districts don't come into the high schools. So District ninety-six, all the students come in, but not, not ninety-four, because then, and then there's tax, doc, and it's almost like it's designed like that on purpose, to make it real complicated, split up. We got all this tax revenue that comes here but doesn't go there. Like, we wouldn't want to give up, you know, North Riverside, because... Like, we wouldn't want to give up, you know, North Riverside, because we wouldn't want to do that. But North Riverside doesn't want to give up part of their section as well.
Well, some feed in a proviso.
Right, they would, they don't want to give up proviso portion because of that tax revenue, right? So it gets really complicated.
It is, it is, I mean, right, I don't know, was it Lagoievich or Quinn, right, put it forth as a possible, I think it was Quinn, right? Got, got a lot of pushback. I mean, I think part of the reason why the area is the way, you know, it is, it's historic, right? It's just, because, because if you look at, say, Florida, there are county schools, right? And so you've got, like, you know, four hundred schools in a district, right? So, I mean, the models are different depending on where you look at the United States. I mean, to Laura's point of, like, just because that's the way we have always done it, is that the best way to do it? No, explore, there's nothing that hurts for exploring it, but I absolutely would agree that it's hugely complicated.
But I would say before. I would say that I'm all for it, and I would love to figure out how to consolidate it, I just, I don't know, I think.
I mean, some of the things that you look at, so if we look at our tax bill, we have money from the different feeder schools, whereas your consolidated district, any kind of building or anything that is covered by the whole district, and you can negotiate better prices and things like that. You could also look at, you have two junior highs, maybe one might focus on science, one on the arts or liberal arts. Or if you have population where the population's higher in Brookfield than in Riverside, or vice versa, you can switch around. I've heard we don't have busing. Well, we do have busing in Brookfield. So, you know, there are ways to share resources, or there's also movement for teachers. If teacher says, this building just doesn't work for me, there's other buildings, or there's more movement, social worker specialists, that gives them, I can take two buildings that, a tiny district might not have enough to support one reading specialist, or some other specialist, but if they're in a district, maybe we could have some different things. So maybe we're too small, where it benefits us, you know, where Evanston was huge, Donors Grove, some of these other places are bigger, and it benefited them well. Maybe we are not big enough, or maybe we are, we don't know, but just to kind of look at it, I think.
I think before the district spends any resources, I think the first step that needs to occur is, I think Laura can bring back some reports or some information to the board. And then what I would recommend, the second step be, if the board reads it, and a majority of the board thinks we should look into consolidation, the second step, the crucial step, is you need to go to each feeder school board. Because seven of you might all say, hey, consolidation is great. If those elected boards, their administration, I mean, the administration ultimately works for the board. So you would need to poll those three boards and say, yeah, we want this, or yeah, we'd be interested in, you know, sharing a consultant, or getting a consultant to come in and do this. Because it doesn't do us any good if we do it, and District ninety-six is like, no, we have no intentions of wanting to consolidate, or ninety-five says it, right? Because then that doesn't.
It's dead in the water.
Because there's so many steps that need, that would need to occur. Before you even do that and get everybody spun up, you want to make sure the other boards are up there. Because I know there's something similar like that going on in a different region right now, but, you know, it's kind of created some, some animosity. And so I would just say, make sure all the other boards, that would be like step number two after we educate ourselves. And if this board wants to pursue that, the second step would be getting the other boards on board.
And get different teacher union contracts that could be affected, which.
Well, that's the, that's the other issue, is that the high school, the high schools, the high school contract is significantly a higher pay scale than the elementary pay scale. So, so then there's, but that would go into, like, step three or four, where, you know, if, if, so step two is getting all the feeder schools, right? Then step three would be finding a consultant, and that consultant would probably identify, like, hey, with all the different teacher contracts, administrative contracts, you know, you're looking at five year, you know, you're looking at these upfront costs, is it really worth it, you know? And that's, but before you even got into that, I would say, if this board gets to a majority where they say, let's pursue it, the second step is you've got to make sure the other boards are wanting to sit down and do this, because it could cause some animosity.
Then what's the, well, you stated some, some good goals, you know, I don't, I don't need to restate.
I mean, yeah, you have, you know, curriculum, you have curriculum from up to down, you have.
There are some good outcomes and some good reasons.
I mean, there are some things that would be very positive.
Gets complicated fast.
So are we putting it on as the agenda, or that's something you're going to gather information or report back to the board on?
So it's under consideration for future meetings, and so that would be, as soon as I can get you some things whacked, then if you think it's enough, then put it on the agenda.
Okay, so hold off till you get back to it.
Yes.
So at least you, that's something that.
Then we can research some more, right? And we'll come back and have another discussion about it.
Bring up more and think about it.
Because I think we're all on the same page, we just don't really know how to go about it. So, all right, that brings us to closed session.
Okay. The Board of Education Township High School, District two oh eight, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second by Ms. Ellis.
Ms. Seero?
Yes.
John?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.